We do appear to have a quorum, so I will call this meeting of the Transportation Policy and Planning Board to order for Monday, May 16th, 2022. Sharon, if you'd please call the roll.
Grant Foster. I saw him earlier. Keith Farman.
Sharon, I can't hear you. Can anyone else? Uh huh, no. Okay, that was on my end. Continue.
Barbara Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Randy Udall.
Present.
Christopher McKeel.
Yeah.
Carolyn McAndrews.
Present.
Thomas Wilson. Waltz Azar, Deanna Santana.
Present.
Margaret Bergamini. Roger Ness Lankella.
I think you Sharon, we do have a quorum. Approval of minutes from our April 18th, 2022 meeting, assuming all board members have had a chance to review those if they so chose. Is there motion to approve? I'm Chris McKeel, a second. So like Carolyn, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from the April 18th, 2022 meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oh, no. Chair, please unanimous, if you'd like to register, no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, it will go down as unanimous. Thank you. Do we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes. We have, um, Michael Bartnik.
Okay. All right, Michael, if you are there, you have three minutes. You may begin when you're ready.
Hello, this is Michael Bartnik.
Hi, hi, Michael.
So I am a new resident here in the Dane County. I'm not familiar with specific procedures here this after, this evening. I just understand you will be reviewing the proposed amendments at this level to the Transit, the Transit Board, Transit Plan. And I wanted to indicate my desire that you support those amendments that have been put forward by people.
Well, Michael, I appreciate that. We're not taking public comment on that item today that was written down in our, and so I don't mean to interrupt you, but if I let you.
Thank you.
Then anybody else would then be allowed to when we, when we noticed that we weren't doing that. So we will be having a public hearing on the Metro Network redesign on May 31st, and then it will be before this board again on June 6th, and then before Common Council on June 7th. You're also welcome to submit your comments in written form, but thank you for calling in. I do appreciate it.
All right, so you'll be reviewing the amendments presentation. Thank you.
We will be learning more about, we're getting an update on the amendments today. But we will have a formal public hearing on, on May 31st for, for that item. We're not going to be taking public comment on it today.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Do you have any additional registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Are there any communications, disclosures and recusals or recusals for members of the board? Seeing none. Our first item of business this evening is Legislaw 71227, adopting the Metro Network redesign plan. As I just indicated, this is an opportunity for us to get an update for board members to ask questions and for board members to request additional information. For anyone else who may be listening or who may watch this after it is concluded, there will be a formal public hearing on this item on on May 31st, and then the Transportation Policy and Planning Board will take it up again on June 6th, and it'll go before Common Council on June 7th. There will now be a vote on this item this evening, so we'll get the informational update, ask our questions and ask for additional information and then move on to the next item. That's all I have. If we can go on to our presentation for the, for the item.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I think I know all of you, but I'm Justin Stunberg, General Manager at Metro. Tom, you did an excellent job explaining that process, which is a little unusual as this, obviously, this is a big, big project. And we had to approach it in a slightly different way, just to make sure that we had time to get through everything in each, at each step. So the one additional piece of information that I want to make sure everyone's aware of is that we have a public meeting on this Thursday at 6:00 PM, May 19th. And that'll be an opportunity for the public to ask questions of us and otherwise get clarification. But then, as Tom mentioned, there'll be a public hearing on May 31st, allowing folks to express their support, opposition, preferences on amendments, all the above, in front of you, all of you. So. But we're gonna, we're gonna pass the baton around a little bit tonight on the presentation. I'm gonna go to Mike to, to go through the meat of the presentation, but he'll hand it back to Mick and to me at different points. But before he does that, I just want to emphasize to y'all, this is a very big deal. The network redesign, you know, focuses on the transit network across the entire city and our partner cities. And it's a very big project and a big undertaking, but one that I think will yield huge benefits for, for the vast majority of the citizens of Madison, including those in typically underserved communities. And I think, as Michael get into, it's really important for us to understand why we're doing this. You know, this network redesign is fundamentally a function of years of complaints that we've received about our system being extremely complex, circuitous, with people spending a lot of time on the bus driver and in circles, trying to get where they want to go. And service being infrequent and/or only in the peak hour. And so this, this project is the culmination of years of complaints that we've heard from the public. It is not just something we've, we're doing because we want to. We're trying to fix the system, but there are trade offs with that. And so we all have to understand that, you know, we have to figure out what the right set of trade offs are. So with that in mind, we obviously presented the draft plan to you all back in January, and I've been on a public outreach spree since then. And we've got a series of amendments that, that Mike will go through tonight. So with that, I want to hand it off to Mike.
Thanks, Justin, and thank you, Tom. So that's a good introduction. I'm gonna go on the, the basic goal, which I think we should remind, as Justin laid out better than I will here. But the goal is to redesign the route system in a way that better meets Madison area residents and businesses. The website here is mymetrobus.com/redesign. So we continue to upload all the information that we have to that website. That's also a way for us to, to get comments back and things like that. So any, any of this information that you want to dig into further will be on the website.
Mike, I'm not seeing your screen. I don't know if others are.
Let me try again. Tom's giving me the thumbs up. I'm gonna try again.
It's visible to me.
You can see it? Okay.
Transfer point?
Yeah, the west transfer point. Okay. So this is our pre-COVID transit network. So this is what we're talking about. We're talking about where the routes go. But equally important to that is how frequently they run. So we're not yet ready to dive into schedules and every individual bus stop yet, but we are talking about where the routes go and how often they want run, which is some of the most important things to think about with our network. The current network is, as you may know, largely designed around the four transfer point system, the four transfer points, west, south, east and north, where buses come in, pulse and go out. We had quite a bit of overlapping commuter service that would kind of bypass the transfer point system during the peak hours to provide some of that more direct service and capacity into the downtown area. So this is what we're trying to redesign, and we're trying to take a, a from scratch approach to redesigning our, our existing transit network. Why now, as, as Justin mentioned, addressing a lot of those longstanding issues and discrepancies, things that we've been hearing about a lot over the years, such as long travel times, infrequent service, circuitous service, not so much that service isn't available, but that there's a bus stop in front of people's house, but it's not useful to them. They can't get to their job in time. They can't use it in a meaningful way because it just takes too long to get anywhere. A second reason is, is as we recover from COVID-19, we'd like to recover in a way that reflects future needs and future travel demand. So as we ramped back up to our full service levels, we'd like to, to do that in a smarter way as opposed to just going, going back to where service was in 2019. And then thirdly, we have a separate project, the Bus Rapid Transit project, that will provide a direct, fast and frequent service in the BRT corridor. And so in any case, we need to reimagine the service within that east-west BRT corridor. And so, you know, because all of the routes connect with each other and, and the transfer points are involved, we'd like to, we decided to not limit ourselves to the BRT corridor, but instead basically redesign the entire system. And in doing that, we'll be able to bring some of the benefits of the BRT system to more neighborhoods, such as that faster and more frequent service. So looking at transfer rates here, as, as Justin alluded to, the, the people who are disproportionately burdened by the system today tend to be people who are low income and, and people of color. We did a onboard transit survey about seven years ago and found that African Americans were transferring at about triple the rate of, of white riders. Low-income riders were transferring at about double the rate of mid-to-high-income riders. Most of that is related to the transfer system and some of the forced transfers and indirect service that exists, exists in Madison's periphery, combined with a lot of low housing, low-income housing that is available at, on the, in the periphery of Madison. Also looking at travel times, not surprisingly, you see a very similar pattern. African Americans having a much longer trip on average than, than white Madisonians and low-income riders having a significantly longer trip than mid-to-high-income people riding the system. So this is, this is something that we've heard for a long time, and it's something that we can't address with small adjustments to the system that we've typically made over the years. And so that, this combined with a lot of other things has led to this project where we're trying to address these, these things all at once. So looking at the map, the red line on this map is the first east-west bus rapid transit line that will be constructed in 2023 and open in 2024. We'll also have a second north-south bus rapid transit line, the green line, that will be implemented with the electric buses and the service pattern with the transit network redesign. So those two routes will largely form the central, the center of the, the system, the core of the new system, as well as the third bus rapid transit line, this blue line that, that doubles up service on the University Avenue corridor and continues west towards Middleton. So the transit network redesign really looks at everything outside of the east-west BRT corridor. It looks at where the north-south BRT lines go and the Middleton BRT line, as well as every other transit route in the system. We have done several steps to get to this point. If you'll recall, the first stage was existing conditions and choices. Secondly, we laid out two competing alternatives for the new transit system. Phase three was the draft plan, which we're now at the end of, and phase four, which we're now entering, is the final plan, taking the draft plan, adding those amendments and coming up with a final plan that we can implement. This will be reviewed, and I'm sure you've seen it before, but just to, just to review, we have, the alternatives are, and the choices involve two competing choices, the, the goals being a ridership system that has concentrated service on the fewer corridors, but has faster and more frequent service, like this fictional map on the top with the red lines, or a coverage network that has many routes that go many places, but as a result have much more frequent, in much more infrequent and indirect service. So this was a large part of the choices and alternatives, and we asked where we should be on this coverage to ridership spectrum. So, so we drew two, two draft alternative maps, the ridership alternative on the left, showing the, the fewer routes with more frequent service, and the coverage map on the right, showing more routes with less frequent service. And asked where we should be on that spectrum. The answer that you gave us was ridership mostly, in other words, moving in the ridership direction. But not to the, not to the extreme where we only consider ridership, that we would have some lower frequency routes to reach more places. But in general, we're moving that direction of fewer routes with more frequent service. And in fact, the direction that we were given were, was to, if anything, try to, try to stay, stay in that, in the two or, or possibly above, and really try to, try to, try to push for as, as much ridership while, while doing what we need to do at the same time. And so that's what we're trying to achieve. That has resulted in this map, which is the draft plan, and I'll just stop on this for a second because this will be important. As you can see, there are no transfer points in the draft plan. Instead, we have fewer routes with more frequent service. The color of the routes indicates how frequently it runs. The red lines run every 15 minutes, while the blue lines run every 30 minutes. You can see the east-west bus rapid transit route as Route A in the, the east-west corridor every 15 minutes, and then Route B, the north-south bus rapid transit route. We have two other core city routes, Route C and Route D, that run every 15 minutes. Towards the end of those routes, they often will split. So for example, on the west end of Route D, you'll have 15-minute service on Monroe Street, and then it splits. So every other bus will either go west along Tocay or south along Midvale. And so as a result, when they split, they become less frequent, and so you have 30-minute service on those, those tails or those branches. So outside the BRT and the frequent routes, the majority of the routes serving the city are every 30 minutes, and they generally go in both directions compared to the system today, which has many more routes, which are often one-way loops, and in many cases run hourly. We also have a handful of routes that only run during peak periods, such as Routes X, Y and Z, providing commuter service on the northwest and south parts of the city. The service on campus is relatively the same, and then we have a couple of other routes, such as Routes to Epic, that are, that are mostly unchanged. We do have a couple of routes on the east side here that do run hourly. Those are the only two routes that run once an hour on the east side, C and C2 and C3, which are branches of Route, Route, Route C. So from the draft network, we looked at how far you can get in the draft network compared to the existing, existing system. So in this case, the darker gray is how far you can get on the bus on the existing system in 45 minutes. The lighter blue is how far you can get in the draft plan. We then produced this map, which looks at the entire city and does that analysis for all these points all over the city. Basically, the green hexagons are places that have more access. You can get farther and reach more places in that 45 minutes. There are some places, such as these pink areas, that lose access. You cannot reach as many places in 45 minutes. So as we refine the plan, we're looking specifically at those areas to see if we can improve service there. Some key takeaways on this, bus routes will be designed to be longer, straighter and more frequent. Transfer points will be eliminated, eliminating unnecessary delays and indirection. The system overall will be far simpler, logic, more logical and easier to use. If Mick's on the line, I'll now pass it over to him, and he'll talk about our public input process. And then following that, we'll talk about the amendment process.
Hello, everybody. We've been promoting the redesign since back in February. Our full list of our media outreach is in your packets, but I just wanted to go over some of the highlights. We had ads on the side of the bus. We had flyers on buses, newspaper ads. We put signs on hundreds of stops and a number of bus shelters. We did a real big radio campaign throughout the month of March using all three major radios, radio groups in Madison. We did digital advertising and mobile apps, and we did ads on streaming devices like Roku and Amazon Prime and Sling. We did paid social media booths, and we sent 14,000 postcards to post office mailing zones that, that contained low-income housing. And then we did our standard email and text message alert groups. In addition, staff, mainly Mike, attended more than 50 community meetings throughout this time, and those meetings were at NRTs. We did different city geographical districts. We went to Middleton, Pittsburgh and the UW Northside apartment complexes, including senior housing, like the Dryden Apartments. We talked to the Dane County Federation of the Blind and all sorts of other city committees and groups. Most of the meetings were virtual, some were in person. Most of the meetings were very well attended with around 50 people attending each. So we also ran a survey that started in February through the end of April, and that was online. We had printed versions on the bus in all Madison libraries, Pittsburgh and Middleton libraries, and the surveys were in English, Spanish and Munk. And we had about 3,300 responses. That's actually even more than what we put on the slide, and we had several hundred emails. What we saw, what we got back from the survey responses is we saw a number of themes. People were supporting the coverage model, not the ridership model. That was one of the themes. Some people were concerned about having to walk further, especially in the winter. People were concerned about service being removed from neighborhoods. And then there was a feeling that this was not equitable, equitably serving low-income riders, people of color and those with disabilities. And specifically, the areas that were mentioned were reduced coverage on the north side, service removed from the Pick and Save on Aberg, direct service removed from Old Stock to the downtown area, service along LA Drive and Tacoma Road neighborhoods, and then also service on Olin, Bay Creek, Bram, Capital View, Burrows, Fish, Fish Atrey, Buckeye Road and east, Buckeye Road, east of I-39 and 90. And there were others, but those were just some of the themes that we saw. And with that, I will turn it back to Mike.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, so I'll do this part just, so to emphasize how we are planning to approach this amendment process. So as you can imagine, with any changes, it's gonna be very difficult to keep, to, to have the different variants of what could change and how they interact with everyone, all the other changes in the system. So what we've elected to do is go through an amendment process where we've tried to, based on the public feedback that we've heard, we've created a series of amendments that, for the most part, are standalone. So you can, you can see the, the impact of that amendment on its own and how it, how it would change. And so we've included the cost of each of these and how they would impact our budget. And then ultimately, you know, you as the policymakers will make the determination as to whether or not these amendments should move forward and which ones. We've, we've certainly provided our, our recommendations, but ultimately, that's, it's your decision to make. There are certainly our exceptions. You know, some of them work better with others than, than some others do. And so we've tried to highlight that in some of the texts as much as possible. It's just hard to untangle this web, you know, and make them distinct individual things to vote on. But we've done, done that to the best of our ability. But ultimately, you know, what we're asking for is the Policy and Planning Board to vote on June 6th, based on the public hearing that you'll hear as well as this presentation on, with, on the draft plan as a whole, plus what amendments you'd like to move forward as a recommendation to council. And then the following day, June 7th, council would take that recommendation from you all and deliberate and vote on the plan as a whole, as well as which amendments they would like to move forward with. But that's not the end of the process. This is a planning document, and, and there's still a lot of detail that this plan does not include. Frankly, it's really difficult for us to, to create all the implementation details that are necessary when we've still got 20-plus amendments on the table. There's just far too many variables and, and moving pieces that we can't do a complete analysis of what it would take to implement this. And so once the council adopts a plan, we will then go forward with getting those implementation details completely ironed out. A big part of that is the equity analysis. So with any service change that we do, we have to do a title, it's a function of Title VI to do an equity analysis of that service change. And that's, it's not, and that's not an optional thing. You know, that's where our federal funding is continued upon that. And so we have to do that before we make any changes. It is certainly not our intent to implement anything that would show a disproportionate impact to disadvantaged communities. And so if our analysis does show that, we would expect to come back to you all with, with some, some additional modifications to the plan to ensure that that doesn't happen. That said, we have designed the plan in a way that we, we don't think that that analysis will show disproportionate impacts. And so we're, we're optimistic that it won't, but until we do the analysis, we can't know for sure. So once we do that, that Title VI analysis, and we've completed all of our, our details of implementation, such as what time the, the initial buses pull out in the morning, you know, any transfer activities, bus stop locations and modifications that might need to happen. A lot of those details, we would be bringing back this package of details to the Transportation Commission for final approval later this year. And, and then at that point, we would, you know, move full speed ahead with implementation. So again, this is not the final bite of the apple. We certainly expect another approval step later in the year. And, and so I guess ask for your understanding that this is a planning document, and there are some details that we just don't have yet. But we've, we feel that, we feel confident that we've provided enough details to give direction on the plan at this point in the process. But ultimately, assuming that everything stays on schedule, all the approvals stay on schedule and they don't get pushed, our hope is to implement this in June of 2023, so just a little over a year from now. We do that in June because we expect to see, you know, when we first roll this out, there'll be some travel times for the bus that are a little bit off, and we'll have to make adjustments in schedules and things to make sure that things are working efficiently. So that hopefully we implement in June, we adjust then in August before all the students come back, and hopefully we've kind of ironed out most of the kinks at that point. But this is a map that Mike created to kind of walk us through the different locations of the amendments and the areas that they impact. And so as you can see, those are kind of spread all over the city. But we do feel that the vast majority of the comments we received in public feedback, that these amendments do address the vast majority of them. Certainly, there are some that, that just we weren't able to accommodate a fix for, such as those who asked, you know, for no additional walk distance, you know, as we talked about at length last fall. It's really not possible to provide better service and still provide service everywhere unless we have a lot more money and which we just don't have. So. But we feel confident that we've been able to address the vast majority of those comments with these amendments. So with that, I'll pass it back to Mike, and he will walk through those one by one. And then we'll take any questions again.
Thank you, Justin, and bear with me as I switch documents here. So this is on, just starting on our website, of course. This text here, I'm not going to go through because it's basically what we just talked about. Here's the draft plan again. So just to keep in mind that all of these amendments make changes to this draft plan. So you have to keep this in mind, and then you look at these amendments to see how it changes it. Justin mentioned, most of them are independent. Some of them kind of relate and play off each other. Most of them do not completely rely on each other, but some, some do directly, directly relate to each other. So just kind of keep that in mind. We try to walk through that in the text. This is the same map, just to point out, we, you know, we put this, these numbers in front of the access. You can kind of see that we. We are kind of looking at some of those areas where the access is reduced in the draft plan to address that. As well as some of the, the comments and, and discussions that we've had all over the city. With the various Alders and public and other stakeholders that would be affected. So I'm just going to go ahead and jump into this one. This is amendment number one. Probably one of the more simpler, simple and easy to explain ones. In the draft plan, we had Route B, which is the second bus rapid transit route coming up Northport. We're in the far north end of the city, so this is Northport Drive on the north end. So in order to try to achieve two-way service here, we were going up Northport, left on Troy, right on school and then back on Northport. The idea was to serve everything while going in two directions. That, that had a number of problems, including concerns about service on School Road. As well as service to Mendota, Mendota Mental Health, Troy Gardens and some of these other destinations along Troy Drive over here. The solution on the bottom, as you can see, is to go to a one-way loop. So the, the downside of this is that there would be some people that would have to ride around the loop. Just kind of, kind of go out of direction, but this is very similar to the way, the way service is designed right now. These, these streets, Troy and Northport are relatively close to each other, so I think it's relatively a small number of people. That would, that would have to do that and be burdened. We do show this as a one-way loop going counterclockwise. It could go the other way. That's one of those implementation. Details that Justin mentioned that we'll just need to figure out as we get, get further into it. It'll kind of depend on where the bus lays over and things like that. But anyway, you'll also see a red note here saying staff recommends that, that means what it seems to mean. It does not mean that, that the Transportation Policy and Planning Board and Common Council does not have direct control. Over whether this amendment is adopted. So we want to make sure that, that you're, that you're aware of that. I'll, I'll stop. Alder Foster, do you have a question?
Yeah, just wanted to know as you're going through these, if you'd be able to. Just share maybe expl. Whether or not the staff recommendation coincides with kind of. Community input in the area or if it's at odds with, or if there was sort of split. So you could just share whatever you know about sort of what you heard from the public for, for the amendments as you go through them. That would be helpful.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. That's a good point. Yeah, we've heard pretty good things about this. We have heard concerns about the lack of. Coverage on the west end of Troy Drive, so I would say this one has been pretty popular. Supported by the Alder and has received pretty, pretty good feedback as far as, as far as we've, we've heard. Amendment two, we're still on the north side. So this was an early amendment that we let out relatively early to address. A, a common. Concern on the very north side. In the draft plan, you will see a peak only Route X going north of Northport up towards Wheeler and Delaware. And then coming down. So this peak service only runs in the morning and in the afternoons on weekdays. And there was a clear desire or need for all-day service on this north side neighborhood. And so our first thought to put out to see what people thought about it was this amendment number two. The way this worked was D two would no longer go to the airport. It would instead keep going north. And then serve Wheeler and Delaware all day. So you would have this Route D two service all day on weekdays and weekends. Since Route D two would replace Route X, Route X would go away. And then to serve the airport, we would have this frequent shuttle Route S. That really just goes back and forth between the BRT line and the airport. So we, we did have some concerns with that internally as well as. It doesn't serve one of the major issues that has come up, which is service to the pick and save. And so we didn't see a lot of support for this one and so we are, staff are not recommending it. Instead, we're recommending an alternative to it, which is Amendment nine. And so I'm sorry you have to wait, but Amendment nine, it takes a different look at this area. Moving on to Amendment three C. So in the draft plan on the left, you can see that we did this crossover at First Street. So the two Ismus routes on Jennifer and Johnson Gorham would cross over each other at First Street at the east end of the Ismus. The idea being that you'd have a point where all four of these routes coming together. Route C and D as well as the BRT routes A and B would all kind of meet at First Street. We did have some concerns about that in terms of the turning maneuvers for all of these routes, the travel times, the indirection. Delays associated with unnecessary rail crossings, the pedestrian environment around First and East Washington and other things. And so we looked at a handful of possible ways to undo this crossover. And, and what I'm showing here is Amendment three C, which is on the right. Essentially, it just keeps the routes going in the direction that they're going. So Route C on, Route, Route C would be on Jennifer Street. And it would just keep going around Atwood. Route D would be instead, Route D would be on Johnson Gorham and then Route D would split. And either just continue going north on Sherman or head east on Milwaukee Street. We looked at a handful of different ways to connect Route D one to Johnson Gorham Street. We did not feel a lot of support for. For any of the, any of the alternatives, one of the alternatives basically became unnecessary with, again, Amendment nine. And so the, the version of this that we're supporting at this time is Amendment three C. Which has the most direct service from Milwaukee Street to East Johnson Street. And then continuing west on Johnson Gorham. So the basic trade-offs of this is that all of these routes are faster, more direct, more logical, less out of direction, fewer turns, all of those things. The downside is what we were initially trying to do in the first place is providing a place where all these routes connect. So people either have to walk a few blocks to transfer if they're doing that. Or they'll have to go downtown to transfer. Staff have looked at this quite a bit and we, 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 we feel that this is something that should happen and so we recommend this amendment. The feedback, I think, has been fairly positive. Yeah, I think that the feedback's been, been pretty positive. Some of the. Some of the complaints were that, for example, Route C, people going to downtown. That they, they thought that this was a little bit circuitous. We honestly didn't hear a lot about it, but I think what we did hear was pretty positive. Another concern was Route D two ultimately goes to the airport. And so would Route D coming in on Johnson Gorham then be sufficient service to the airport? And so that's, that's just kind of one of the trade-offs. It does not go to kind of the, the Capitol Square and the. The south side of the Ismus where the convention center is and so forth, but all these routes are more direct. This amendment does a little bit play into a lot of other related amendments. You just have to kind of keep this one in mind as you think about some of the other ones that affect the downtown area. Okay, so on the south side, one of the major concerns we heard was lack of service coverage outside of Park Street. On Olin Avenue, on Fish Hatchery Road, serving a lot of the neighborhoods. Some of the destinations like Ramness Apartments on Olin. The, there's a food pantry on Fish Hatchery Road and a handful of other important destinations. So we looked at different ways that we could add a second route, a second all-day route on the south side besides Route B. And that, that route is tentatively called Route O. This is the first iteration of Route O. So it, its general goal is to connect the downtown campus area. With those neighborhoods on the parks, on the south, south Madison area that, that need coverage. And so you can kind of divide it into north and south. I'll look at this, the north end quickly because I think that's a little bit easier. We looked at going to the Capitol Square along West Washington. We looked at going up to the UW campus along Mills Street. And we also looked at going up Randall Avenue, which unfortunately is labeled on this map, so I apologize for that. So what we heard was a pretty good support for the service on Randall Avenue. I think the main goal that this accomplishes is front door service to Henry Vilas Zoo. There is one thing that would need to happen. There's currently a traffic circle at Randall and Vilas, which is, which is right here. That traffic circle does not need to be removed, but it does need to be modified. It needs to be slimmed up so that buses can drive around it. We tested it in the bus and it's not workable for buses, but if we just kind of trim the edges, we are, we'll be able to get through there. If that does not happen, or until that happens, the fallback will be Mills Street. Which will continue to provide service three blocks away from Henry Vilas Zoo. And will continue to provide service upwards campus. But as you can see, it's, it's fairly close to Park Street. And so it's a little bit more duplicative of Park Street. So between these three corridors, staff are recommending the Randall Avenue. Route and so all of these alternatives show the service on Randall. On the south side is a little bit more complicated. We're trying to serve a handful of destinations around the south side. This was the first iteration. This would be a one-way loop, serving Olin Avenue and Ramness Apartments. About three blocks east of Park Street. It would then do a one-way loop circulating through the southeast side. Serving Align Energy Center, serving Goodman Pool. Now serving Russ, Costa and Brom Street. And then coming back up and, and going in. So that was, that was one alternative for B. You're not seeing for A. For A was just a version of this that went up West Washington. So the next iteration of this was Amendment four C. Four C has more two-way service, so it just goes out Olin to the Align Energy Center. Makes a loop and come, a small loop and then comes back the same way it went out. That would provide better, more consistent and more logical two-way service along Olin and John Nolan to the Align Energy Center. So that was kind of the goal of, of four C, but it would not provide service to any of these neighborhoods west of there. And then finally, we released Amendment four D. This is a larger one-way loop. It comes eastbound on Olin, similar to four B. And then does a larger clockwise one-way loop. On Olin, John Nolan, serving the Line Energy Center and then westbound along Badger Road. And then northbound along Fish Hatchery Roads. That would serve Ramness Apartments. It would serve Goodman Pool, Align Energy Center. And Fish Hatchery, including the food pantry on Fish Hatchery. It would not serve Russ, Costa and Brom. So we have heard, I would say the most positive things again, related to Randall Avenue. And related to this last amendment four D. Especially in the survey, we've heard a lot about the need for service on Fish Hatchery Road. And so that is why staff is tentatively recommending Amendment four D. Now, there is also a South Planet, South Madison Planning Committee, Commission meeting tonight. That's starting actually very soon and they're going to take up this issue as well. And so our recommendation is, is contingent. On whatever happens and what's discussed at that planning meeting tonight. So I just wanted to make that clear. Okay, so moving on to amendment number five, this is the near west side. One of the common complaints that we heard was the need for all-day service. Basically along Route X here. So Route X was a rush hour only route along Speedway, Mineral Point Road, Tokay, Odana. And then going south on Gammon and McKenna. Providing more direct service and, and some coverage service during peak periods. But again, serving people going to the downtown area. If you look at the southwest side near McKenna and Hammersley, for example, it's a fairly dense neighborhood. And they are on Route H. Route H does not go downtown. And so one of the goals there was to give them at least a rush hour trip directly downtown without transferring. So we heard a lot of need for that to be an all-day route. Particularly in the Westmoreland neighborhood in order to provide all-day service in that neighborhood. And then we also had some concerns about Odana Road. There's some destinations on Odana Road that we, we feel need, needs all-day service. So amendment number five basically just converts Route X to an all-day hourly route. So it would likely retain that service every thirty minutes during peak periods and outside of peak periods, it would be once an hour. On weekdays and weekends. One other minor change that's not noticed on that note, noted in the text. Is this minor change from Tokay west of Whitney to being on Whitney Way and then west on Odana, just a small change there. The idea being that with this being an all-day route and people making transfers and going in both directions, that we would need to make better connections there. Amendment six A, this relates to a common complaint about the lack of direct and frequent, or sorry, the lack of direct service and continuous service from. Old Sock Road, High Point, Westfield, this west side neighborhood into downtown. Those people are, are used to riding Route fifteen, which would go directly along Old Sock and University Avenue into town. With the draft plan, they would have Route H here, which would take them somewhat out of direction to Mineral Point Road where they're transferred to BRT. And then continue their trip into town. We also have Route Y here, which goes to Middleton, shown as peak only. And I'll walk you through Middleton just a little bit. We, our goal here in Middleton was to replace the very circuitous and confusing. Route seventy, seventy-one and seventy-two with one route, Route F, which would be more direct and more frequent. The, the fallout of that is that it would not provide some of the coverage that Route seventy currently provides. And so Route Y would be there only during peak periods. We heard quite a bit of concern that Route Y should run all day. And so Amendment six A accomplishes both of those things. It shortens Route H so that Route H ends at West Town Mall essentially. And then service in the High Point, Old Sock area is served with Route R. Route R would be one branch of the BRT system most of the time during weekdays. Once an hour, you would have a BRT bus that would go out to Sheboygan Avenue. Continue once an hour as Route R to the Junction Road facility and then, and then come back once an hour. Tied with that Route, Route Y would do a very similar thing. You would have a Route Y bus along the BRT corridor. That then once an hour would continue up Park Street and Milton, Gammon Park, Branch and Century. There are a couple of destinations on Route Y that we really would like to serve and then consultation with the city of Middleton. The South Ridge area as well as this kind of central part of University Avenue. And this area, I think this is Tideman's Pond, but this area just kind of south of the pond. So our goal is to get all-day service in those areas. So that's Amendment six A. We've heard. I wouldn't say very specific. Feedback from it, but we, we have heard people say very clearly that they want that direct service. Along Old Sock Road directly to downtown. And so that's what Amendment six A achieves. Amendment six B was a different amendment.
Mike, just, do you want to note the Westfield?
Sure.
Issue?
Yeah. Sure, yeah. One, one other issue was Route H, as you can see, is on Westfield here. There's kind of been a debate in the neighborhood whether Westfield should have. Speed humps or it should have transit service. It can kind of have one or the other. The outcome of that, the, the feedback from that was fairly clear that it should have speed humps and it should be a slow. Neighborhood street and that the transit service should be on a high point. And so as a result, this amendment six A shifts the service from Westfield to High Point. And as six A implies that there's a six B, there was a six B. Six B was a slightly different version of this that was more expensive. And really didn't accomplish that goal of, of being as direct and so we have eliminated it. And I will stop for questions along the line because I know these things do kind of move, move, move fast. So Margaret, do you have a question?
Yeah, a quick one. I see an added cost figure here of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I assume that's annual and to the operating budget. But is that just the Madison share? This route, these routes also go through Middleton, so. Does that encompass the share for both partners or just the city of Madison?
Yeah, good question. I should have talked about that earlier. So you will see this cost added. Generally, the way this works is you'll, you'll see the cost added. That's the total cost to add that service. In this case, most of that cost is Madison. A little bit of that does get transferred to the city of Middleton. There's a table at the end that, that lays this out all very clearly. So when I get to there, I think, I think that'll be, that'll be more, more clear. And then if you read the text here, generally the text will say. Uh, and then if you read the text here, generally the text will say how this all works. And then kind of why we're doing this and, um, uh, kind of what it achieves. So that's what you'll, you'll see kind of repeated in this text. Uh, and, and as I'm, as I'm talking about it, uh, what, what, where these routes go and, and then why we're, why we're making this change. And then finally, again, uh, staff recommends, uh, we do recommend this, this change, of course, contingent on support from city of Middleton for their part of Route Y. Amendment seven, this is a cost neutral one. Uh, this is a pretty straight, uh, trade-off. Route D, uh, in the draft plan, uh, has frequent service on Monroe and a little bit of Odana until Midvale, and then it splits. And then it goes south on Midvale and then continues, uh, south and west. Amendment number seven would, would split it earlier so that it would go on Nakoma. One of the common complaints that we heard very, uh, early on in the project was the Route nineteen service area. That this area along, basically along Seminole, Seminole Highway, north and south of the Beltline. Route nineteen historically provided, uh, at least weekday service direct into the campus and downtown area. And so they, they have, uh, they have asked for that type of service to be reinstated. Amendment seven doesn't exactly do that, but it does provide some, uh, better service along Nakoma. And so those people would at least have a shorter walk to Nakoma where they would then have, uh, uh, that direct trip into, to campus. Uh, staff are fairly neutral on this, but I think we've heard more in support of it than opposed to it. We have heard both support and opposition, but I think we've heard more support than op- opposition. And so I, I think we, uh, support this one. We recommend this one. Uh, moving on, this is amendment number eight. Uh, so one thing I should mention is that, uh, we have reserved, uh, about five percent of our operating budget for rush hour service to increase capacity mainly in the downtown area during rush hour. And so all of this really talks about the weekday daytime service. But we did know that we'd have to add some, some service along these routes during the rush hour to accommodate the overloads that typically we had. Uh, for a while, we did not talk about how that service would be spent. We just assumed it would be, uh, parts of, of routes operating more frequently. Uh, we then decided to look at it in a little bit more detail and decided that it would be useful to have two new rush hour patterns uh, on the ISMS to help, uh, uh, achieve that, uh, capacity that we need. And so these are routes W and Route V. They're rush hour routes between the ISMS, Johnson Gorham on one side with the W and Jennifer Street on the south side with Route V. And those routes would go directly into the UW campus, similar to routes twenty-eight and thirty-eight historically. And so they would, they would continue up towards Observatory Drive, um, providing capacity into the UW campus as well as that one-seat, uh, ride so that those people aren't, uh, transferring and then potentially overloading some other route. Um, and so the, one other thing that Route W accomplishes is, uh, i- it provides some service to Sherman Terrace Apartments. As you may know, Route two, uh, would split today. It would split here and it would go either via Sherman, which is, uh, this road here, or via Fordham, which is this road here. We did not want to do that in the new system because it's just very confusing. But it is very difficult to walk across here because there are no public street connections. Uh, so ultimately, we want to provide that public street connection, but in the short term, Route W will at least provide rush hour service uh, to Sherman Avenue where they can ride around the loop and then continue towards town or transfer to wherever they're going. Uh, we've, we've, we haven't heard, oh, uh, a lot from the public, but we have heard support from the University of Wisconsin for these, these two particular routes. And so staff, uh, do recommend this, this amendment. Uh, okay. I alluded to an amendment nine that ties various things together. And so, uh, this is it. This is amendment nine. Uh, this ties together a handful of uh, common concerns that we've heard on both the east side and the north side. Uh, we, uh, and I'll just walk through some of those concerns and then I'll talk about how we, uh, dealt, deal with it with amendment nine. Uh, one concern was the need for all-day service north of Northport up, uh, along Wheeler in Delaware. Uh, in the draft plan, there's only the peak period service up there. Uh, we also talked to Dryden Terrace Apartments and there was concern there for the lack of service directly on London Dairy, where, uh, people with disabilities would be able to get on the bus. There is a small hill between London Dairy, which is, London Dairy is east-west, it's just north of Northport here. Uh, and so they did not want to have to walk down the hill, uh, down Dryden, cross at the traffic signal and then catch the service there. Uh, so that's one thing. That's another thing. And then, uh, the pick and save, as you may have, may have heard, uh, the pick and save service, direct service to the pick and save. Our initial plan was to have bus stops on Route B on Packers and Aberg and then build a sidewalk connection from there to the pick and save. That still is our plan, but, um, we also want to achieve the, uh, what we've been asked to do, which is provide service to the front door of the pick and save as Route seventeen currently does. Another thing is the city's planned men's homeless shelter, uh, up here on, uh, the Stoughton Road, Frontage Road, just south of Kinsman. And so we needed to provide consistent all-day service to that site. Uh, we wanted to provide more service to more neighborhoods to the Woodman's, which is another grocery store and, and, uh, a low-cost grocery store where, where people need to go. Finally, uh, we heard, uh, that, uh, there was a strong desire for direct service between Owl Creek and La Follette High School, particularly for, uh, high school students who want to participate in after-school activities. Uh, the, the street network is, is, is of course very broken in this, in this area. Stoughton Road is, is very difficult to cross and get to. Uh, the, the draft plan has a branch of Route C coming down Stoughton Road to serve the Owl Creek area. We would try to put some bus stops on Stoughton Road with, uh, some associated pedestrian improvements that those, so that those bus stops could be accessible and serviceable. Uh, but that does leave a pretty long walk through La Follette High School. And, uh, transfers to that route would be, uh, fairly out of the way. And so this, this, the goal is to provide, again, that direct service between the two. Uh, so what we have done with it, the way we've done that is Route L. It's a second crosstown route from the east side to the north side. It does a loop serving Dutch Mill Park and Ride as well as Owl Creek. It then comes up Agriculture Flum, serving La Follette High School. Uh, it operates, uh, without stopping along Manona Drive, uh, up Walter Street. Oh, and then one other, one other areas, we did see a, a service hole in, uh, in this East Moreland neighborhood, south of Milwaukee Street and west of, of Stoughton Road. And so we are able to then also have service along Walter Street and then heading east, serving Woodman's, uh, going up Stoughton Road towards, uh, Kinsman's and providing service to the men's homeless shelter. Uh, coming back down, transfers to Route A, uh, serving the front door of the Pick and Save, uh, and then along Aberg, transfers to Route B. And then up Sherman, we then do a slight deviation to Dryden Drive, uh, where we will have bus stops much closer to the Dryden Terrace Apartments than we would otherwise have with the draft plan. And then coming back to Sherman, uh, and going north towards Wheeler and Delaware, doing, doing loop. So this will be a roughly two-hour loop with two buses on it. Uh, service will be approximately once an hour. Oh, and then, uh, some other things. So Route C, a- and I didn't put the two maps on this, this because it's just, it's just too much to look at. But the branches of Route C changed. So, uh, Route C, C one, which continues out Cottage Grove Road is the same. Uh, route, uh, the, the branches C two and C three are largely replaced by Route L. But then C two provides once an hour service on Buckeye Road that would then continue east of the interstate towards Kings Mill. Uh, so that would provide service on Kings Mill Way, which is not provided in the draft plan. Uh, so there's a cost to this amendment, but it does solve a lot of the, of the, the shortcomings of the draft plan. Uh, moving on to amendment number ten, uh, this is a, a slightly more simple one. It relates to converting Route X to an all-day route. We're on the near west side here, uh, kind of some house, uh, housekeeping items. Route E would no longer do the University Bay, uh, loop because Route X is going up there and providing that service. So the Route E is then, um, uh, free to be a little bit more direct going into town. Some of the feedback we heard was that Route E was too circuitous. Uh, and going back and forth between the hospital and Region Street and kind of winding back and forth. Uh, so we were able to achieve a faster Route E. Uh, the other thing we're doing is we're shifting it from Midvale to Seago. We think that because Route X now provides all-day service at the intersection of Mineral Point and Midvale, that Route E would be better being pushed west, uh, particularly this intersection of, uh, Region Street and Seago. I'm sorry that all these streets aren't labeled, uh, but that provides kind of an important bus stop there for service to several destinations and homes in, in, in that area. It's fairly minor ones, cost neutral, but it kind of, kind of works with the, the, our, the, the all-day X. Okay, uh, amendment number eleven. There are two, two different versions of this. Uh, so amendment, uh, or sorry, the, the draft plan has service on Routes E and D two ending basically along McKee Road. They would come down, uh, uh, to McKee and Maple Grove and, uh, uh, stop at a terminal there. They may turn around and go back, or they may interline and continue. You know, for example, Route E may continue as Route D two. Um, and, uh, so there was a desire from the Alder and the neighbors, uh, on the southwest side to extend service south of McKee. So the, the draft plan already ser- extends service south of where we currently offer service. Uh, but these areas are densifying and building south. And so there was a desire to push it farther south. This is one version of this. It reroutes D two from McKee to Fitzrona and Nesbit and then up Maple Grove. So you do lose service on McKee, but, uh, you know, most of those areas are walking distance either west or east to Route E or Route D two. And does provide some nice service along Maple Grove. Uh, Nesbit and the south end of Maple Grove does not provide a lot of value, but that is basically the route to connect these two things. Uh, and so that's, that's, uh, that's, that's route, the way, that's the way eleven A is shown. Eleven B is a slight variation on that where we would take this more Serpentine path, uh, going down to the target and then coming back up to McKee Road and then going back down Manchester and then up Maple Grove. So that kinds, ki- kind of serves everything. It, it, it fills in this gap on McKee, uh, it provides service on Manchester and doesn't give up too much south of Manchester, but uh, this is not the recommendation, again, because it's very Serpentine, it's very circuitous. Operationally, we have some concerns about, uh, some of the, the turns here. Um, we feel that this version of it, amendment eleven A, is just a cleaner, uh, a cleaner, simpler and better route design. And so that, that is our staff recommendation. Uh, now there is a, a bit of a complex thing here. Um, we feel that the, uh, this can be accomplished cost neutral. In other words, there's enough time in Route D two to add a few minutes onto it so that we can do it without adding any buses to it. Um, the, the complication, and I'll go back to, to amendment three C here. Uh, routes, uh, amendment C three, uh, which, because it makes everything faster and, and more direct, we think that with this one, we actually could save a little bit of money. Uh, so we could save up to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars if we did this amendment C, uh, three C on its own wi- without doing anything. But if you do, uh, if you do, uh, amendment number eleven, then you can't because that slack that we are using on the ISMS or that we're, we're gaining on the ISMS, we're now using on the southwest side of the city. So it's a little bit complicated, but, uh, if we did three C without eleven, we could save money. But there's not really a scenario where amendment eleven, uh, really, really adds, adds to the cost. Hmm. Okay. Uh, moving on to number twelve. This is a fairly simple one. Uh, our goal here was to, uh, serve the West DMV, which is on the, the west side of this Excelsior Drive Loop. Uh, and so this is a pretty simple change of Route F, just using the west loop instead of the east loop. Uh, it adds probably a minute or two to the route, but it does not add any cost. And so staff recommends. Uh, we have heard a little bit of support for this one. Um, it's, it, it feels like a, a fairly clean and, and easy and, and, and logical change. And so staff recommends it. Uh, I'm going to back up a little bit. Uh, amendments eleven A and B, we did not receive any direct feedback on which one, uh, people, uh, suggest. Uh, however, we have heard a general desire for, for service in this area. Okay, uh, Randy, do you have a question?
Yeah, uh, on eleven B, is this one that was amended from, uh, from the city of Pittsburgh or the transit, uh, in, in traffic, city of Pittsburgh, or how did this originate?
Uh, this, uh, uh, originated with the residents, oh, on, uh, along Maple Grove and south of McKee. It's, uh, so the, the desire is to provide that service over there. This, this, this dotted line here is the border between Madison and Pittsburgh. So there are some potential impacts to how these are, to, to the service as it is in Pittsburgh. However, we don't think that there's really any cost implications with this. Uh, if you look at the, the route here on eleven B, uh, doing this, uh, doing this down and up by the target versus eleven A, where you're just, uh, continuing along Fitzrona. It's, it's about the same amount of distance. It's about the same amount of time. And so it's unlikely to be a, a cost implication.
A cost implication to the city of Pittsburgh or this is strictly, uh, Madison at this point? I mean, it's a significant dollar amount. That's why I'm asking three hundred and sixty thousand.
Uh, right. So that, so that, that dollar amount is specifically related to Madison.
Okay.
Uh, and like I said, it's, it's not really a cost. It's more that it, it uses a savings that we've used somewhere else. So as far as Pittsburgh is concerned, there's, there's no potential, uh, cost really here to Pittsburgh. Um, you know, there is some, uh, change in the way it goes through that, that area, which is in Pittsburgh. Uh, there are also is potentially, uh, a way to potentially get some bus stops uh, down here at the corner of Fitzrona and Nesbit. There's not a lot there today, but there could be in the future. There's also some residential south of one fifty-one. So there could be some people that would walk up, uh, underneath the bridge and, and access the service there. Uh, so there is, there are some poten- potential, uh, changes in the way that it serves Pittsburgh, but we think that the cost is the same under any scenario.
Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Okay, uh, amendment thirteen. And, oh, so actually I should also mention that we, we packaged all the amendments that relate to Pittsburgh kind of together. So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen all have some implications for Pittsburgh. Uh, so, so I'll, I'll kind of go, uh, I'll kind of go, go through those. Um, one of the, the issues here was on L I Drive. This, this street to the, just east of it is Red Arrow Trail. And then this, uh, east-west street is called, uh, Crescent, Crescent Street or Crescent Drive or something. And so there was a noticed, uh, lack of access improvement or reduction in access in this area, kind of east and south of, of the Allied Drive neighborhood. And, uh, a desire to provide more service. It's also, uh, in, in Pittsburgh's, uh, transit priority areas. And so, so we did want to try to look at how we could better provide service in that area while also keeping Route D two as fast and direct as we can. Um, and so the, the solution here is a shift from Allied to Red Arrow, and then this street is called Genoquin. And so this kind of shortcuts, it, it provides half of its service on Red Arrow and then shifts over and provides half of its service on Allied. That pr- will provide an important set of bus stops on Red Arrow and Genoquin where people can, uh, walk up and, and access that service. Uh, so the, the running time implications for this are relatively small and they can be achieved with no cost. But as you can see, again, we're showing the city boundaries in dotted here. It does shift the service from Madison to Pittsburgh. I don't have that cost here. I do have it in the table at the end. One other thing to keep in mind is that when we talk about costs, total costs, Madison costs and Pittsburgh or Middleton costs, it's very complicated. Uh, it relates to the way the subsidies are distributed and how things are billed. Um, and so what I'm generally talking about is, is the fully allocated, uh, cost. And so what I'm generally talking about is, is the fully allocated cost just to operate the service. And so if you see, if you look at some of the documents in Pittsburgh's materials, you may see different numbers for the costs associated with, with these things. And, and that's, that's, that's the concept. There's, there's the operating cost that we pay. And then there's the fully allocated costs that we built to Pittsburgh. But then there's, there's subsidies that Pittsburgh receives, but then back those costs off to be a lower amount that they pay to us. So we're really talking about different things when we talk about costs. So I just wanted to point that out. Amendment 14 is extending the BRT line Route B from its terminal just north of McKee Road to the Pittsburgh Civic Center, which is on the south end of Fishatory Road near East Cheryl and Lacy Road. So we would come down Fishatory Road, do a loop and then come back. So this would provide service every 15 minutes to that Civic Center. This would add one bus to the rotation. That does add a considerable amount of cost. And so we have, we have talked about these concepts with the city of Pittsburgh's Transportation and Transit Commission. And so I have included their recommendation in red with a Madison staff recommendation. And so generally I just want to point out that, that, that our staff recommendation is, is largely just, just mirroring what our, what our desire is of, for our, our neighbors in Pittsburgh. That has not been through the, the, the Pittsburgh City Council yet. But I did want to make sure that, that those recommendations from the TCTC are in here. They did, they did not recommend this extension primarily due to the cost of it. Amendment number 15, this relates to Route Z. Route Z largely replaces Route 44 rush hour service in Pittsburgh along East Cheryl. Route Z in the draft plan comes up MM Rimrock Road, John Nolan Drive, and then circles around the Capitol Square and goes back. From there, people could transfer to wherever they're going. We did hold a meeting in Pittsburgh where people said that they would like the service to be more oriented towards the UW campus as it currently is with routes 44, 48, and 49. And so amendment number 15 accomplishes that. Instead of going to the square, it comes up Broom Basset through the University Johnson Corridor and then up through Observatory. This also accomplishes a second goal that we have as, as staff for, for Madison Metro as well as the city of Madison and the UW is to provide more capacity going into the UW. So that, that kind of provides that opportunity. With this amendment, you still would be able to get to the Capitol Square. It would just be a, a walk up the hill from a Broom or Bassett Street. And that is, you know, that is, that is a bit of a ways. But you know, you could also transfer to other routes if you didn't want to make that walk. We, the, so the, 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 this, this amendment was recommended by the Transportation and Transit Commission. The costs here and the, the service change is primarily in Madison. So this cost is, is a cost to Madison. But we're kind of taking the, the lead on this from Pittsburgh since it's primarily serving their residents. The cost add is a likely cost that we would like, likely have to have anyway. Again, that would be part of that 5% contingency of extra service added to the UW area. So although this does add cost to Madison, it's likely a bus that we would have to have out on the road anyway. This is amendment six A. This relates to this neighborhood, which is called the Southdale neighborhood on the southeast quadrant of the Beltline Highway, Highway 14. So Route 16 currently does a fairly long circuitous loop through that neighborhood along this, this is Badger, this is Pheasant, Pheasant Ridge, this is Deer Valley, and this is Ski Lane. And then coming up Rimrock. And then this is Morland Road going to the east. So Route G largely replaces Route 16. But again, in our desire to be more, to be faster and more direct and more frequent, Route G does not do this loop into the Southdale neighborhood. We did hear a, a considerable support for service closer to that neighborhood. One way that we have identified to achieve better service, not, not, not exactly the same level of service, not, not the same proximity to service, but a, a better than the draft plan is to do this clockwise loop in both directions with Route G. So it would westbound, it would spin around clockwise and then keep going. And then eastbound, it would come southbound on Rimrock. Spin around in the same direction and keep going. That would put people two blocks closer to the service as well as they would not have to cross Rimrock Road. Which is a busy road. This connection here on Latitude 43 to Deer Valley exists for pedestrians, but it is not a street. So we cannot, we cannot travel that way in the bus, but people can walk that way. Now, this amendment six B is ultimately what we feel will likely be the service pattern in the area. This does a much shorter loop than Route 16 does. So it, it uses the Badger, Pheasant Ridge, Latitude 43 innovation parkway loop to make a relatively fast and direct connection there. This is not achievable. As I mentioned, and so what we would do in the immediate term is we would do a larger loop that is much closer to the existing Route 16 loop. This would shift a considerable amount of funds from Madison to Pittsburgh because it adds quite a bit of service in this, in, in Pittsburgh from Madison. Th- this is actually currently Town of Madison and it will be shifting to the city of Pittsburgh. So the, the, the Transportation Transit Commission looked at both of these and they recommended 16A. This, this providing the, the smaller loop with the walking connection on Latitude 43. And so that's what we're recommending in our, in our staff recommendation. Getting close to the end here, 17A, this is the last, last real ad. This is a minor deviation of Route Z. The pedestrian facilities here are somewhat lacking. There's a new neighborhood developing just east of Lacy and MM. And so, so amendment 17A would provide a small loop onto Route Z that would go into this neighborhood and then continue on its way. This would add a minute or two to the route. And so that could be achieved within the cycle time. So there would no be, not be an overall cost. But there would be a cost shift from Madison to Pittsburgh because that's a minute or two that's then shifted into, into, into Pittsburgh. 17B is another minor change to Route Z. This brings Route Z into that Southdale neighborhood. This would be rush hour only service through those streets that I mentioned. This could be done without that connection. But it would be dirt rush hour only, only during the weekdays. We brought this up to the Southdale neighborhood that did not seem to have a lot of traction because it would shift some costs to the city of Pittsburgh and make the route less direct and didn't seem to have a lot of support. The Transportation and Transit Commission did not recommend this amendment. And so it's not in our list, list of staff recommendations. Okay, so then we skip from 17 to 30. These are a, a handful of, a cost, cost cutting scheduling amendments. And so as you've probably noticed, a lot of these are additional service, service that's added. Some of them can kind of be, you know, fit in the contingency and things like that. But so we also looked at what can we do to pay for some of these without a, a budget increase. And amendment 30 relates to the frequent service on Bus Rapid Transit on weekends. So in the draft plan, the BRT system routes A and B have service every 15 minutes between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And then a 30-minute service outside of those times. So early morning and late evening service would be every 30 minutes on both routes. Amendment 30A would eliminate that frequent service on Sundays. And so on Sundays, you can see here, the blue is every 30 minutes, the red is every 15. Routes A and B would be every 30 minutes all day on Sundays. Now, there is a significant portion of routes A and B where they combine. In those areas, you would still see a semblance of service every 15 minutes. So that's why I'm showing the combined service on all of these trips as well. But at any rate, this amendment serves, saves about $700,000 because it affects Route B that's partly in Pittsburgh. This, Pittsburgh would see some of those savings as well. This is a, a different version. 30B eliminates the frequent ser- service on Saturdays as well. And so under amendment 30B, 30B, the BRT system would be every 30 minutes all the time on weekends. And then 30C kind of splits the baby and says, we'll give you kind of a, a small amount of frequent service on Saturday only. And so we would have frequent service on Saturday, but only between about nine and five during the day. So it's a shorter service span only on Saturday. We recommend, staff recommendation is for amendment 30A. This maintains the full level of, of frequent service on Saturday, but eliminates it on Sunday. We do feel that there's a value to having that frequent service on the weekends. Our Saturday ridership historically has been significantly higher than Sundays. And so, you know, of course, we'd like to see that frequent service all the time on both days. But we, we do feel that 30A is a, is a reasonable cost cutting measure to afford some of these other things. And one other thing, amendment 31, during, in the, in the draft plan, we have service, the, the daytime service ending at 8:00 PM. So this is when your 30-minute drop, routes would drop to hourly, your 15-minute routes would drop to every 30 minutes. And with amendment 31, that change would happen at seven o'clock rather than eight o'clock at night. Now, it currently ends at about 6:30. So the draft plan introduced a change that would push that, that sort of daytime service later in the evening. And then amendment 31 kind of pulls it back a little bit. But still, still has a slight increase, I think. That amendment would save about $600,000 overall and staff recommends. Really haven't shown these amendments to the public. So we haven't really gotten a lot of feedback on them. The first time they saw it would have been today or Friday or in between. Okay, as I alluded to earlier, there, I have two tables here. So this is a summary of the staff recommended amendments. Not necessarily the amendments that will be adopted, but the staff recommended so that you can see how these costs play out. The cost on the left is the total cost. That includes kind of just an operating cost of around $100 an hour. It's not that fully allocated cost that incorporates the, the capital cost. It's also not that lower cost. That's kind of a net after subsidies, but it's just that operating cost of $100 an hour. You then see it split up into Madison costs and other costs. And some of this does get a bit complicated, but for example, six A, that's the service that affects Middleton. The, the cost addition would be $870,000. It would cost Madison 680 and Middleton 190. There are some other things. For example, in amendment eight, there's a cost of $800,000 and then it looks like it's being paid for by nobody. But again, that's service and that's cost that we had already kind of anticipated and was in our contingency for that rush hour reserve of added buses that we would have at the rush hour. And so that's sort of accounted for in our, in, in that rush hour contingency that we'd already been planning for. As I mentioned, amendment three C and 11A, those have kind of a complicated play on each other. Amendment three C would save cost. But amendment 11A would, would, would use that cost. So they would cancel out. However, if you did not do three C and you still did 11, it would not cost. So 11A would still be free in that scenario. That gets a little bit complicated as to why we, we cost it out that way, but that, that's kind of how it works. And then the other thing is in the draft plan, we did have some, some funding that we did not spend in the draft plan. And so there is still a little bit of, of unspent unallocated contingency in our operating budget that, that we would apply to this. And so if you add all of this up, the Madison cost totals about an extra million dollars per year. I did not total the other costs because it's, it's kind of a different total depending on who's, who's paying for it. And of course, all this, you know, we can, we can look at these numbers in, in different ways if you want to see different combinations. And then table two, these are the other amendments that are not included, included in the staff recommendation. Not that they can't be done. But again, if we want to take these numbers and move them around, we can take these numbers and move them around and see how it affects the bottom line. So that's, that's the end of that document. That's on our website. It's on Legis. So there is one other thing I wanted to show you.
Hey, Mike, before you move on to that, I was hoping to talk, the last two things in the table were
Oh, sure.
Related to a couple of cost savings that showed in the next one. So just so you all are aware, we've had some discussions with Manona. They are potentially interested in rejoining the system. We think that there's a way to, to kind of reallocate our existing hours to serve them that would actually net us that $250,000 and, and provide them better service than they're getting today. So that's, that's a, that's an if. Certainly a potential that could save, could be mutually beneficial for both us and them. And then we're also talking with a, a private employer that we don't really want to get into yet, but that one of the, the, the service here would potentially serve them and they've expressed interest in, in providing some, some operating subsidy for that. So we've included that here just as a possibility. Those two things combined could take that million dollars and cut it in half. But neither one of them is a, is a given. So we, we certainly couldn't include them in our, in our budgets at this point.
Yep, good, good, good point. Thanks, Justin. One other thing I did want to share quickly, as I mentioned, a lot of these amendments are fairly independent or maybe, you know, work with one or two others. But there is this kind of amendment C three that kind of, or yeah, three C that kind of affects the entire system. It affects the airport, affects the north side, it affects the east side. And things kind of lay out different if you assume that it happens versus if you assume that it doesn't happen. And so one thing that we just uploaded to LegisStar was this map, which is the draft plan with amendment three C. And so that, that's on there. As you can see, we, we kind of talked about which routes should, should connect on the west side and the east side. The way we currently have it is Route C ends at the hospital and then connects with the Jennifer Street service. And then continues to the east side. And then Route D, the Monroe Street service continues on towards Johnson Gorham and up towards the airport or the east side. So you know, some of the trails here, who gets the, who gets the direct service to the hospital? One contributing factor here is that the new route, I believe it's V, on the north side will provide that rush hour service on Johnson Gorham to the hospital. So at least during rush hours, it will, they will both have it. So this has been up to, uploaded to LegisStar. And, and that's, that's available for viewing as well. And so I think I'm going to, I'm going to stop there and we can go back and look. I just wanted to, to say that this is a, has been a very long and, and very complicated and very interesting and process. We've talked to a lot of people. The, the discussions have been very productive. I feel we've, we've done our best to try to address as many of them as we can. We've had a lot of good help from different stakeholders. And so we're trying to, trying to achieve what we need to achieve while, while accomplishing what we need to accomplish with, with coverage and, and other things, capacity and so forth. So I'll leave it there and maybe we can go to clarifying questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you to everyone who's been working on this. Obviously, an enormous amount of effort has gone into this. Yes, questions, comments, things we'd like to see at our next meeting? Oliver Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks. Just a couple of questions. It seems like you were able to address a lot of what you heard from the public feedback with various amendments. Are there any areas that stood out where there was a fair amount of input received that you don't feel is captured with any of the proposed amendments or any of the recommended amendments?
Uh, that's, that's a tough one. I feel like we've done most of it. There are some, I'm going to just go ahead and share the screen because it's up. There, there have been some desire for service in this, this area, kind of south of Milwaukee, north of Cottage Grove, along the Ace Wood corridor. So we were not able to address a service frequency there. We did hear of, not a ton, but some about the, the no stop service along Manona and Broadway, that the people wanted service there that is in the city of Manona, so we were not able to provide service there. However, if we do, if we are successful in bringing the city of Manona back into the system, then we will provide service with bus stops in that area. As I mentioned, we did, we did hear from people that they wanted service closer into this Southdale neighborhood. We're not able to provide it. I'm going to talk about the south side briefly. There's, there's kind of three things that this route is, Route O is trying to do. One is service along Olin. Another is service along Rusk, Costa and Brahm, and kind of this interior neighborhood east of Park, west of the railroad tracks, and then Fish Hatchery Road. And so if you look at the amendment options, it's, you can kind of choose two out of the three. We feel that Olin and Fish Hatchery are, have emerged as the, the corridors that need the service the most. And so that's where we tentatively have our recommendation, but that does not provide service on Rusk, Costa and Brahm. I will mention again that the South Madison Planning Council is taking up this issue tonight, so they may be talking about it at this very moment. As I mentioned, there is a desire to extend its service along Fish Hatchery Road here. We hope that someday that can be accomplished. We don't know if it's within the, the means of the city of Pittsburgh now, but we do support that endeavor. I'm trying to think of, there, we did hear for requests from service along Odana here. We continue to believe that that service, that those service areas are close enough to the service along Tokay and Whitney Way, and so we do not have amendments adding service in that area. I did hear of, of one or two comments about this area, Rose and Regent. I think that's about it. I'm sure there are some others.
No, thank you, that's really helpful. And then in terms of coming up with the staff recommendations, I assume some of them were kind of slam dunks, just seemed like an obvious recommendation, others maybe a little bit more challenging to work through. Are there any that stand out that were, where there was maybe kind of stronger differences of opinions or ones that you feel are, are kind of the most like judgment call that policymakers really need to understand, where there's sort of a good case on, on both sides?
Sure. Well, let me just start by saying there's a little bit of all of us in these amendments. It's been a very collaborative process internally. We did try to focus on what would work best for the system as well as how they related to the, the, the request. But let me just go, go through them quickly. We don't have a strong preference on this one, but it was, you know, clearly the, the desire. I think this one, we're starting to feel is, it does not accomplish what the, what the neighborhood wants, and so I think we're kind of falling away from Amendment two. It's kind of same thing for, for, for 3C, we had another one that went up to commercial. We had kind of different thoughts about whether that should be on East Johnson, Commercial or Aberg. They all kind of added different things for various reasons. I think we're, we're fairly coming to the, the, the thought that, I think we're, we're fairly in agreement that East Johnson kind of feels right. I think there is some value to going up to Commercial, but I, I feel like East Johnson probably, probably accomplishes what we need there. And again, I'm just, Forest is kind of a big one. I, I feel like between all three of these, staff does not have a, 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 a strong recommendation. It's, it's really just about what we've heard from the neighborhood. Now, we could operate in either, any three of these without a problem, but I, I think it's, it's just really where the service is needed. Five is pretty slam dunk. Six, if you, if you look back at six, 6A was slightly different, but, you know, we had some discussions on that one. The, the basic concept was should the, should the route end at Chaboygan and force a transfer and be a continuation of Route H? I think we heard pretty clearly from the neighborhood that it should be, should be pretty direct. And so I think we're, we're pretty in line with that as well as slow costs. I think there's a fair amount of agreement there. This one, we really have no preference. This one felt pretty, pretty straightforward. We had quite a, we had a long discussion, we heard a lot from a lot of people. And so internally, we spent a lot of time looking at these issues on the north side and the east side. A lot of, a lot of very vocal people, a lot of people that are very interested and concerned about their transit service. And so we looked at a lot of different things here. I think we've really come, come to the, the point of really feeling that this is probably the right direction to go, it kind of solves all of these problems. It, it, it provides the coverage and the connections that people need, but it keeps the main routes straight and direct. So we're pretty, pretty, uh, pretty, pretty, pretty sure there. Route 10, we didn't spend too much time looking at this. On this one, I would say we really don't have, you know, we talked about both of these. I think we, most of us kind of prefer 11A with the straighter direct route. But, you know, there was some discussion about the benefits offered by 11B. So, you know, there was some, there is some kind of push and pull there. I think, I think most of us would prefer this, this one, but really we can do whatever is preferred. This one seemed pretty straightforward. We, this one, we, we pretty feel pretty firm that that's, that's kind of the way that should go. This one really is up to the city of Pittsburgh. And, yeah, we, we talked about it, different ways for Route Z to come into the city. I think we're pretty, pretty unified in thinking that this is probably the right path, although we, we could continue to look at, at how these things fall together. Yeah, this, this I think is pretty straightforward. So, you know, to answer your question, I, I think, I think most of us are, are pretty, I, I think on, on most of these things, you know, we can talk about this for hours and we can draw different maps and different ideas, and we do all the time. But I, I think the, the ones that say staff recommendation, I think we've talked about these, and I think internally we're, we're pretty, pretty much on the same page. I should probably ask some of my colleagues who are here, I don't know, Justin, if you feel that that's the case?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I think, you know, there's some that we feel more strongly about than others, for sure. But, you know, like Mike mentioned, the, the Nakoma Road one, you know, right? We, we truly just don't have a preference as a staff, and we feel that, you know, the, the, the public input has been very clear for us, that that is the right direction, and so that's why we're recommending it. But operationally, you know, we don't really have a preference one way or the other. But I'd say we certainly, we certainly all agree on the, the, the recommended ones to varying degrees of severity, if that makes sense.
That's really helpful. I appreciate you taking the extra time to just talk through that. And for the ones that are sort of contingent on support from Pittsburgh, what's the timeline for sort of understanding that decision and what are the implications? If we, you know, were to recommend going that route, and then it's not something that's supported by Pittsburgh? Can you just kind of talk through how that plays out in, in different scenarios?
Yeah, good question. So the first step in Pittsburgh was Transportation and Transit Commission, which is complete. They provide a recommendation to their council. Their council is taking this up, and I don't have the date in front of me, but I believe it's May 25th, or somewhere around then. So they will be recommending a, a, a transit plan to the city. And so they wanted to have that recommendation, and before the, the, the board and the council act on it. That's not the end of the story. So these, these, these costs are all fairly back of the envelope. And so we tried to be cost neutral, not only system wide, but also in Pittsburgh. And so as we schedule these things out, there could be more information that, that pushes us in one direction or the other as we get a clearer understanding of the costs and the, and the shifting of, of costs with the amendment. So, you know, we could, we could find out that they're a little bit cheaper than we thought, or a little bit more expensive than we thought. And, and so we'll continue that conversation as we get more information.
And then I think there was at least one that was, I think, contingent on support from Middleton. If I have a different timeline or similar.
That's, that's pretty similar, that's a little bit looser. We, we basically need to, they, they support it. It's, it's basically just to understand if they will have the, the operating.
And Mike, Mike, I can weigh in on that one.
Go ahead.
So basically, it's kind of a, it's very in the weeds, but there is a, a change that, that Middleton can affect in terms of how they get their state subsidies that would net them out almost equal to this, this amount of money. And so in discussions with them, basically, we've come to the conclusion that if they make that switch, that they can, you know, this change can happen without any additional out of pocket cost for them. And so that's, that's the direction that I, that I believe they're planning to go.
Right.
Sounds like a good deal. And then my last question is, so if, if ultimately the, we were to recommend or council was to adopt all of the recommended staff changes, we're looking at a little over a million dollar increase or, you know, above what the current draft proposal is. Can you put that in context of what that would mean for Metro's budget and kind of what the expectations would need to be then and when, when those would come into play?
Sure, I could take that one too, Mike. So, you know, we've done our best to try to estimate these costs. And as Mike said, you know, some of it's to be determined as we get into scheduling, and, and the cost may end up being less than what we thought. We're trying to be fairly conservative here, because we don't want to, we don't want any sticker shock later. But the, the reality is that in 2023's budget, we would not need any additional subsidy because we still have the rescue funds that are coming through. But starting in 2024 is when some of these additional funds would be needed. And the, basically, it would be subject to the, the annual budgeting process at that point. You know, and I, I think it's good for us to have safety valves, you know, like Saturday BRT service and things like that, that we can dial back if we need to. But, but ultimately, you know, we, we would have to ask for that additional subsidy every year to, to ensure that we put forth all the service. The, just for frame of reference, the, the Madison subsidy, including the vehicle registration fee and the, the Direct City subsidy is around 20 million. And so this would be a, you know, 5% increase in that roughly.
Great, well, thanks for all the answers to the question, and thanks for all the great work on, on the project. Looking forward to talking more about it.
All right, thank you. Alder Hinkman, can you go ahead, please?
Thank you very much, and I join that it shows the great amount of work that has gone into presenting this. And so I want to center, center back on a couple of statements that this is a planning document, and it's not the end of the process. And I, I really wanted to highlight that because I'm interested in the equity analysis and the Title VI. And so as I look at this and, you know, the, the, what comes back from the analysis from the Title VI? And we have these recommendations before us now. And when do you, and then you have the recommendations, plus we have this timeline. When are, when are you expecting to get the analysis completed? And in the approval of the recommendations, how are you going to pivot and make any adjustments if they are called for in the analysis? That's a lot in that question, but I really am really interested in the Title VI analysis.
Sure, so as far as timeline, we expect to bring that back along with all the other details, such as bus stop locations and, and schedules and things like that later this year. Probably sometime in the fall, you know, we, we don't have a hard timeline on it yet, but most likely sometime in the October neighborhood, I would guess. As far as any change, if the Title VI analysis does show changes that are necessary in order to make sure that we avoid disparate impacts, we would have to come back to council to amend the plan along with the implemented, along with adopting the implementation details. If the, the Title VI analysis shows that everything is fine, then we would only go to the Transportation Commission for the, the approval of those bus stop and, and scheduled details. But as you know, Transportation Commission, any Transportation Commission decision could be appealed to the full council of, you know, if desired by elders, so. That, that's the process that we see, but as far as timeline, sometime this fall, but I don't have an exact timeline.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Margaret, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you very much for this presentation, and thanks staff for all the work that they've been doing on this. This last round of public, um, public presentation and input has been fairly robust, and I appreciate that very much. I appreciate everybody who sent in their comments as well and attended the meetings. I do have some questions that are, one question that's a little bit in the weeds, which is in terms of Pittsburgh and city of Madison and how this is divvied up. When we're talking about these cost estimates, is this pre or post completion of the changing, the changing of the boundary lines? The dissolution of the town of Madison and the swapping, swapping of lines with Pittsburgh?
Post. Yeah, so we, 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 we know that there will be some parts of the town of Madison that will become Pittsburgh, and so they would have some small increase in costs, even if we made no change. But our, our assumption has always been the, the post, post town of Madison dissolution.
Okay, and, you know, when you're using this, you know, rough, and I know it's at this point, a rough estimate, but this hundred dollar an hour figure, is that, that's, is that a gross operating cost or is that net of particularly a fare box?
So it, it, I can take that one, Mike. It's, it, it's net of things that vary with service. So there are some funding sources like fares that if we add more service, we would expect to see some additional fares. Our federal funding is about 50% dependent upon the service that we provide. So if we increase the service by 10%, we would expect to see our federal funds go up by 5%. And our state funding is not dependent upon our service at all, so that wouldn't go up at all when we add service. So our, our actual total gross cost per hour is more in the $130 an hour range. And so the hundred dollars an hour is kind of netting out those things that we would expect, the additional revenues we'd expect to see by adding that service.
Okay, and then talking about the discussions with Manona, with some of those cost figures that you had in the final slides. I'm, I'm assuming that that is just fixed route, that there has been no discussion of what, assuming, or what, including Manona in the service area would do to our paratransit budget?
Yeah, we have, we have looked at that, because it is a requirement that we provide that paratransit service if we're providing the fixed route. So that's, that's basically included in the, in our expectation that their contribution would be 250,000 a year. That's, that's inclusive of both the paratransit incremental cost and the fixed route cost.
Okay, so on these other Okay, so on these other changes, um, does that also take paratransit charges into account? On the various amendments, et cetera, particularly say expanding the service area in Fitchburg?
So, uh, Mike, I, I think the only one that really would have impacted the paratransit boundaries would have been extending the B line south into Fitchburg, which we're not recommending. Um, otherwise, um, the, the remainder of them wouldn't really change the paratransit boundaries.
I think some of the stuff east of, um, east of the interstate.
Yeah, that, that, that is all included and that was all priced out as part of the draft plan.
That was priced, that, that is included. So it's not just the hundred dollars an hour for fixed route. It's hundred dollars plus some guestimate of paratransit cost. I mean, I ask this because we, we don't spend a lot of time talking about the cost of paratransit in this committee, um, but it's priced, it's, you know, it's not cheap, uh, it's not insignificant. Uh, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is that it was included in the draft plan. Um, at none of the amendments, other than that B extension really materially changed the boundaries of paratransit and therefore would have changed the, our cost for paratransit. But certainly the draft plan would, uh, because of that extension east to the interstate. And that was included in kind of our baseline cost of the draft plan.
Okay.
And, and the amendment eleven, which increases service on the southwest side.
Right.
Because of the three quarter mile boundary, there's just, there's really not much in the city of Madison. If anything, that would be more than three quarters of a mile south of Fitch at Tree Road. So it, it all basically would have been included anyway.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mickey.
And then, um, last question for the moment, the, um, process for the Title VI analysis, um, uh, if that analysis comes back saying, uh, with, with, uh, recommendations for uh, adopt, uh, amendments to the plan, changes to the plan. Does that, would that only go to the council or would it also be coming back to this committee or to the Transportation Committee?
Yeah, I, I would expect the plan change to come to policy and planning board as well.
Okay, all right. So it, obviously you've got this thing on a very tight timeline. Very tight timeline, um. When do, when would we expect to get the Title VI analysis completed and back in front of, i- if it, if it necessitates changes back in front of the various committees and the council?
That's, that's what, uh, we, sometime this fall, um, you know, I can't commit to a specific timeline just because there's a lot of work ahead of us, but, um, you know, our goal would be sometime this fall.
Okay, and, and who does that analysis?
Uh, we're having our consultant do it. The Jar- Jared Walker and Associates.
Jared Walker will be doing that? Okay. Um, all right, thank you.
All right, any further questions, comments? Um, Alder Hinkin, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, I have just a follow-up question. You said that, um, our consultant will be doing the Title VI analysis. Is this, um, could you say more about that? Is that, is that part of what the, or what, what Jared would be doing, um, in his analysis if he were doing it? Um, or do you look at an outside consultant? I just, I want that relationship is.
Yeah, they, they do that, that work all the time. Um, it's a, it's not, it's not a process, um, that leaves a lot open for interpretation. Um, you know, it's, it's a fairly federally prescribed process and so, um, we, we certainly, um, they, they do it all the time. So it's, it's a fairly, um, simple process. It, it's a lot of work, but, um, it's a fairly straightforward process.
All right then, any further questions, comments, discussion, uh, requests for information for following meetings? All right, seeing none, thank you again to all the staff that have, have worked on this. Uh, and will continue to work on this. It is, uh, incredibly appreciated by everyone here. And, uh, and hopefully the, uh, community as well. All right, our next item then is Legisdar six one one seven four, amending RES twenty two zero 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 six five, supporting an application to WISDOT for federal funding under the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six Transportation Alternatives Program, uh, TAP, uh, citywide.
Yes, a lot of this information, uh, was presented in the Director's Report for the April meeting. We, uh, when we approved the TAP application, we, uh, did not include, uh, B cycle uh, stations in South Madison because we weren't sure, uh, we could include, uh, a kind of a for-profit entity in our application. Uh, but we did in the resolution, uh, say that staff could make modifications to the priorities. However, WISDOT, uh, WISDOT would prefer that we have a full resolution that actually includes the B cycle as well as a small modification on, on Badger Road, which connects to that bridge that crosses the, uh, the Beltline. So this, uh, resolution makes a couple of those refinements and supports our TAP application. And it kind of formalizes the process that WISOD is asking us to formalize.
All right, thank you, Tom. Um, we do have one registrant for public comment on this item. Um, Brian, uh, Heniman, uh, forty nine oh one, Altam Circle, Madison, Wisconsin, in opposition, wishing to speak. Um, Brian, I can see that you aren't here with us. Um, if you're ready, you have, uh, three minutes. Go ahead, please. Brian, I see you have your hand raised. How can we get Brian on the line?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you, Brian.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Um, item number five, so I'd like to withdraw the opposition. It was, uh, meant for the previous, uh, item, which I understand is for later debate, so.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, um, uh, questions for Tom? All right, seeing none, um, do I have a motion to recommend the amendment? The motion, Alder Furman, is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Alder Furman, did you want to speak at all? Okay, all right, then on the motion to, uh, recommend amending, uh, RES twenty two zero 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 six five, supporting an application to WISDOT for federal funding under the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, citywide. All those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes unanimous. If you'd like to register a no vote, please raise your hand.
I'd like to register an abstention, please.
Thank you, Margaret. One abstention registered. Um, any, any opposed, like to, um, register an opposition, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, uh, thank you. All right, our next item then is Legisdar seven one one seven five, authorizing the negotiation and execution of a contract with, um, HNTB for passenger rail study services.
Yeah, so this, um, actually is a strategic initiative included in the budget was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for Madison to perform a location study for possible Amtrak expansion, uh, of the Hiawatha service. Um, the President's, uh, bipartisan infrastructure law includes a five hundred, over a five hundred percent increase for passenger rail. And so, uh, if we are going to get passenger rail, uh, this is, you know, probably an unprecedented opportunity and this just allows us to start to move forward with that. HNTB is a national firm. They do rail studies. Uh, they were involved in the high-speed rail study back in two thousand and ten. Uh, they also, however, recognize that this is a very different project. This is about bringing conventional passenger rail rather than high-speed rail. Um, and, uh, yeah, we just look forward to working with them and, and they're a qualified firm.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, any questions? Seeing none, is there a recommendation, um, to recommend? All right, motion recommend, sorry. Alder Furman, thank you. Is there a second? Alder Foster, I think you got there first. Any discussion? Seeing none, Alder Furman, do you want to speak to your motion? Okay, thank you. Um, then on the motion to recommend authorizing the negotiation and execution of a contract with an HTV for passenger rail study services, all those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, um, seeing no opposition, no abstentions, I love that on its unanimous. Thank you. Um, last item for the evening then is Legisdar seven one three nine three, our Director's Report.
Yes, I'll do this in three minutes or less. Uh, Bus Rapid Transit, on the environmental document we just received word uh, from the Federal Transit Administration within actually the last three hours that our environmental document was approved. So that's a key landmark in our progression towards getting Bus Rapid Transit. So that's really great. Uh, we've introduced a right-of-way relocation order so that we can begin purchasing right-of-way into common council. Um, and we are also interacting with the Commissioner of Railroads regarding some BRT crossings. For parking, um, it is mostly parking leases, but we are advertising for both the parking manager, division manager, as well as a parking, uh, administrative supervisor, both are very, um, important. Passenger rail. Um, we just voted on, you know, uh, the location study, so that, that is great. Soon the Federal Rail Administration, perhaps in the next day or so, will, will release information on how to nominate quarters for the quarter identification program. This is the program that, uh, we will be pursuing to try and get the extension of Hiawatha service to Madison. So, uh, we will likely provide a request on that. Um, in the Transportation Improvement Program process, uh, Phil Britsmacher has worked, uh, closely with Chris Pedakowski and, um, I think that the cake is starting to be baked. Uh, I think we, or maybe as Oliver Veer would say, we think maybe it's soup. Um, however, um, we have very busy meetings over the next two or three meetings, so we will probably present it at the end of June before. Just as an acknowledgement of the time of board members. The TDM ordinance, we finalized details. Um, enough of the details have changed that we will probably, um, initiate some conversations with stakeholders, such as developers and Chamber of Commerce, uh, to get their input, but also just so that they are not su- surprised. You know, this has been a relatively long process through COVID, and like, and we just still want them to say that they were surprised by this. And then, um, the most of funding opportunity for Safe Streets for All was just actually released today. Um, and so, um, it was released today and I, I, I didn't look at the most of funding opportunity, but, um, we believe it'll be due, uh, late August. And so, uh, we are pursuing that. Uh, we are one of the few transportation agencies that has adopted Vision Zero action plan. And we are one of the only one, we are the only one in Wisconsin. And so, um, sixty percent of that money will be devoted towards implementation. Forty percent will be devoted towards helping communities get an action plan. So a world, a community that can actually move forward with implementation. There are about twenty-three to twenty-eight projects, uh, where they're just kind of on deck where if we if there was an opportunity to apply for funding, we could, we could. Um, and then the transit network redesign, um, you just have, you know, two hours of that, so, uh, close to two hours of that. Um, you are aware of the process and where we are. So that's a, a summary of the Director.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or comments for Tom? All right, uh, seeing none. Thanks again to all the staff who, um, looks like most of them tapped off, jumped off, that's fine. Uh, for all the work that they've been doing on the metro network redesign and all the other projects that you're working on. That's all we have for the evening. Any motions to adjourn?
Move adjournment.
Thank you, Alder Furman, second. My Randy, all those in favor, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Opposed, no? Chair believes it's unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Nice.